Recording in progress.
Oh, okay. That's fine. I'm sorry. Because usually they're over there.
I know.
That's fine.
I'd like to call this meeting of the Sciop Township Board of Trustees to order. This is a special meeting. Just after six o'clock. It's 01. We are meeting today for the purpose of interviewing candidates for the soon-to-be taken position of trustee. Those who are present here in Sciop Township Hall, please respond to the call of the role by saying "present." Please call the role.
Hathaway?
Present.
Palmer?
Present.
Flintoff?
Present.
Jerome?
Present.
Noel?
Present.
We have Kwan.
Thank you. That brings us to adoption of the agenda. It's a simple agenda, but I believe there is a motion.
I'd like to make a friendly amendment to the agenda as proposed. I would like to recommend that we amend this from possible action to discussion only. I think that this is to show quite honestly, there's no way that we can do these interviews. It gives the members of the board time to assess and listen to the interviews with the individuals, comments made from the public. And quite honestly, we need this time to reflect on the information that's going to be gathered tonight to make the best decision for Sciop for our next meeting. So I just don't think it's appropriate to try to make a decision tonight in a rushed fashion. We need to get the input. We have, you know, written communication input. We're going to be receiving communication from the candidates themselves, and then obviously the public wants some issues or have input as well. I would, I have another comment I'd like to make, but that's my motion to amend the agenda as proposed.
Support.
Okay. If there aren't any other correct, oh, go ahead.
I'd just like to make a comment is, is I would agree with that 100%, and that was the original intention. I know there was some other discussion that there may, the board may be ready to go, but I would clearly support the original intention, which was to listen to the applicants tonight and make your decision next week at the regular meeting on the 22nd.
Okay, so we have any other corrections or changes to the agenda? I see none. Please call the role. Oh, just all those in favor of approving the agenda as amended?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Agenda is adopted. That brings us to our one item of new business. And I'll turn to the administrator for review.
Well, first off, excuse me, I would like to say thank you once again to the eight candidates who applied, and congratulations to the four who've been asked to come and interview this evening for the, for the position of trustee. I would also like to thank the Board of Trustees for its support in this process and its input into the discussion and its submission of questions. What you see and what you will have before you is a synthesized role of those, of all of that input into the questions. And just, just a couple of comments in introduction, if I may. There's been several comments made about the process, and I just want to make sure that everyone is clear. This is not a normal employer-employee interview process that you would have in, say, a business or if we were interviewing for a different type of position. This is an appointment to the governing body by statute and in consultation with the township attorney to make sure that, that I'm stating this correctly. Every action in this regard must be done in public. So therefore, all members of the public are invited to attend, are welcome to attend, and quite frankly, we must honor their request to attend. So the idea here is to hear from all four candidates and also to hear their views on the questions that were submitted. And we cannot ask them not to be present while others are speaking. If they choose to not be present, that's certainly their right to do so, but the Open Meetings Act does not allow us to do that. So for all of those candidates who are present, if you wish to remain, you certainly can. If you wish to recuse yourself while others are speaking, you can do that as well, but that particular choice must be yours during the open, during the Open Meetings Act and part of the public process that is here. The process is trying to be as open and as transparent as possible, and I would like to welcome the candidates and hear your answers to the various questions, and then allow the opportunity for the board to make any statements that it chooses to at the conclusion of that. And as you may note, there is one item or one possibility for public comment at the end, so that members of the public can have their opportunity to say what they wish to say as well. All right? With that, may I proceed?
Please, please go ahead. So the, the plan is for the Township Administrator to ask the questions for the rest of us to, to listen?
We wanted to make sure that the board had, was not distracted, so that you had a full opportunity to take notes and listen to the answers that are being, being prepared. The candidates will be interviewed simply in alphabetical order, just as simple as that, was done in alphabetical order. So with that, if I could ask Kathleen Brandt? Kathleen, there, there she is.
Hello.
Welcome. And basically, I'm going to ask you a series of questions, and we will be anxious to hear your, your response. All right. How do you see your role as a trustee between now and November? And also, how would you help the board to be more effective?
First, I want to say, if you can't hear me and you need to speak up, please ask me to do this. This is a different pass than I'm used to. Secondly, I want to thank the board and the Administrator for putting together a process, which I think is a fair process for appointment versus an election. And also, I'm obviously going to be a little nervous. I have notes here. If it appears that I'm reading them, I might be, and that's because these capture my thoughts for each one of these questions. So my role as a trustee between now and November and how would I help the board to be more effective? I think we should engage, engage more of the public in township affairs. We need to do better reach out. I would be advocating for passage of more rules of order. Those are sorely lacking. Also, I would help to, the boards could ensure the township follows all Michigan statutes and township ordinances. I will also provide guidance, my professional guidance, in evaluating financial decisions. And I would also like to engage township staff for insights into township issues. So those are some of the ways I would like to help there.
Excuse me. We just had a comment that they're having some trouble hearing.
Sure.
Sure, please, please.
Test, test, test.
Are we good?
Would you like me to speak so you can get some sense of this microphone?
Just one, one moment. Okay, they said it's, it's good.
Better?
Okay, good. Very good.
All right. Another question. In your opinion, what are the top two or three issues facing Sciop Township in 2022? And how would you work to address them?
Sure, I've got a couple of items here. The number one issue I see is board dysfunction. There seems to be an attitude of continuing to operate the same way Sciop has done for the last 30 years. And this means a very small number of people are making all the decisions for the township, including what projects are to be done, what positions will be staffed and by whom, what consultants are used and expanded. In continuing this known change attitude, decisions are made in private and votes are taken without regard to Michigan laws in transparency. I would consider the way Sciop is governed, governed to be an oligarchy. A few oligarchs are making all the substantial decision. When someone is elected who tries to challenge the oligarchs and to follow the laws, that they are painted as a problem. In fact, this person has more experience than any of the oligarchs. A bachelor's, ambassador degree degrees in public policy, 18 years' experience in local government. This person is attacked for questioning the status quo. If selected, I intend to bring civility back into board meetings and to challenge the status quo. Okay. Secondly, a major issue I see is there's an unbalanced assessment of staffing needs. For example, there's an open financial director that has been open since November the 21st, November 2021. On August the 24th, 2021, the board approved a project manager position, and I see no visible efforts for recruiting in that position. The board is turning to outside consultants instead of staffing these critical positions. And I just want to point out that at the last TAP meeting, trustee Vogel stated more than once that Carly Wardman has been approved as the temporary project manager because the board has not taken any action on hiring. So I intend to push for proper in-house staffing.
All right.
The next question. How would you represent the interests of all the various constituencies within the township? To the degree there are competing interests on the Board of Trustees, how would you reach an independent decision?
Sure. First, I think a definition is warranted of what a constituent is. A definition I found is any one of the people who live and vote in an area, a member of constituency. So that primary list would be residents. And if we try, if we wanted to expand that list to be more holistic, it would include the employees of the township. It would also include the businesses that operate in the township. And it should also include landowners who are not residents. So how I would make an independent decision is I would make these decisions of what's best for the residents after hearing all the input from the constituents and the special interest.
Please describe your understanding of government operations in a general law township.
Sure. A general law township is defined in Michigan statute. It is the lowest level of governments directly representing the residents. The roles for the officers and the trustees are outlined in Michigan statute. Specific duties are assigned to the treasurer, the clerk, and the supervisor. And further, the township officers cannot usurp the statutory duties of another officer. Governance and public participation are detailed in the Open Meetings Act, which some of us have read during public comments, and that the board has equal authority during board meetings and representation, representation and vote.
Fifth question. What in your education and experience makes you the best qualified candidate for this trustee position?
Sure. I, I do have a bachelor of arts degree in business administration. And based on that, I have over 20 years of business process consulting, managing teams and participating in teams acting in the best interest of my clients. So I was on software projects, very large software projects. I would typically leave on Monday morning, fly to customer site, for example Boeing in Seattle, work on that project, and then come home on Thursday. So my role was always to represent, to design processes for the, the client's best interest. So I think that's directly related to a role on the board representing the residents. And also, I was a buyer advancing to senior buyer, and finally, I was reporting to the vice president of purchasing at Owens Corning, and I was responsible for financial reporting for purchasing activities across the entire corporation, across all divisions. My specialty area is termed procure-to-pay, so it means all processes within that definition. I have purchasing finance accounts payable, hands-on system configuration skills, which is directly related to, for example, bidding for services, financial reporting and controls, auditing, BSA software, understanding, and staffing. And also ancillary to any, any business processes that touch upon procure-to-pay, which may or may not be relevant for the township, for example, sales and distribution is not relevant here. Now, in my view, these kinds of skills are currently lacking in today's board. And so what I can do is provide guidance to board members on these topics to make sound decisions.
All right. And our last question. What are Sciop Township's greatest assets, and how can they be used to help this community thrive?
Okay. I see two here, and for me, these are easy to think about and talk about. So one of our greatest assets are residents. We have a wealth of talented people in this township, all ranges of education, multiple degrees. And so what I would think we need to do is engage more diversity on commissions. When I say diversity, I mean that more residents should be invited to be on commissions. I don't personally think a commissioner should be allowed to be on multiple commissions. This dilutes residents' inputs to decisions. So I would like to see our greatest asset, residents, be engaged more and to be invited into the process more. And then secondly, what I see is another great asset is our natural resources. And this is what brought me to Sciop Township. When I was searching for a place to set myself down, to be my aging-in-place location, which I designed my house in that regard, one-story ranch, all open. I made a conscious decision to move to Ann Arbor area because the local airport was reasonably distant, reasonably close, so I could get to my job. The community is incredibly welcoming for all people, I believe. And I knew I made the right decision when, one of the first times I drove through my neighborhood after we'd made an offer, and I drove into the neighborhood and I had an immediate sense of calm. That's what Sciop brought to me. Because of the rural nature, I actually live in a old-growth hickory, I'm sorry, oak and hickory forest. There's a very small patch off of North Maple, near Park Ridge, and my lot sits in that, in that forest, and I treasure that. So what I think we should be doing to help us thrive is we should be protecting our natural resources and continuing to protect those before they are overrun by development. And that includes agricultural land. I would welcome farmers to be within distance that I could drive to, to buy their goods. I currently go to Argus Farms in Ann Arbor. It supports the local farmers, but I think here in Sciop, we could do more to support local farmers and maintain that, those agricultural lands. And I'm very concerned about some of the developments that are occurring that are overly dense. Heritage Wood is a good example. And it seems to be a tendency to allow development if there's some portion of preservation of open space. I would be more inclined to think the community can thrive based on maintaining more open space in general by following the zoning that we currently have in place for agriculture. So I'm, I'm tracking pretty good on my time, don't you think?
Yeah, very, very good.
Are you going to allow us to do any questions for the board?
No, there's, there's no additional question time.
For me to make questions to the board?
Oh, if you would like to speak during public comments, you can speak again, but there's no, there's no time for questions from the board.
Well, I actually am five minutes under my time.
No, it's not just a question of whether there's time, in allotted time, there's just no, we're, we're not allowing that as part of the process.
Up to you, David.
Yeah, the, the process basically was we had a series of questions that we wanted to ask every candidate, and there was a 20-minute window to answer, to ask those questions and get the, get the response from the individual.
So I, I was just thinking that because you didn't specify this, that you might follow the same procedure that you used in hiring the Administrator. And at the end of that, you said, we will give this person five minutes to ask questions of the board, because we should both be interviewing each other. I clearly have the time available because I made my answers succinct.
Sure, I, I understand that. That, that was not part of this, that was not part of the design of this particular process. But as the supervisor mentioned, if you, if you wish to speak under public comment, you certainly have every right to.
Okay. Fair enough. Thanks for your, thanks for your time. And in closing, I just want to say, what I have shared with you today, I consider an interview for the public, as if I was running for office, which I'm not. This is an appointment, but I want you to appreciate or try to appreciate the breadth of my answers as addressing the, the natural resource that most, the, the greatest natural resource, which is the residents. And that's how I phrase my answers. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right. Our next applicant is Gillian Carey. Come forward, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, Kathleen just gave all my answers. So if I sound like I'm parroting her, it's really not. Yeah, that, that was very interesting. Okay.
So the, the process will be the same. We're going to ask you a series of questions and ask for your response. And, you know, how you choose to answer is completely up to you. All right. So how do you see your role as a trustee now, between now and November? And how would you help the board to be more effective?
How do I see my role? Well, if I am chosen, I will do my best to serve the residents and the community, just like I have been for the last three years. Now, of course, it won't be as a resident, it will be working for residents. I really don't see this much different. I would be working with honesty and integrity and openness. I am who I am. I'm not afraid to call out what I see is, what I potentially see is wrong, and I am here to serve. So one way or another, I will be serving. Working with the board, I'm sorry. I don't know how you wear your glasses and not have them fog up when you're reading. Is that hard? Is that everybody's problem? Okay. How would I help the board be more effective? Well, you know, I see each board member as having strengths and weaknesses, and I also see an issue with working together. There is, I think that we all have a common mission to serve the public in our own ways. Now, how we do that, I think that is the problem, and I think that, I really feel that if we come together and have meetings, regular meetings as a whole, and discuss different topics that are being, you know, like I see somebody that has an interest in parks and pathways, there's nothing wrong with that. That's really good. Then I see somebody else that has water infrastructure or whatever it is. But we all need to have our input on those different topics and to come to a mutual agreement within our own ways and have mutual respect for each other. Let's see. Did I answer those questions? So I see my role as helping the community, helping through the board, also working with employees. I, I cherish our employees, from inside of our office to our fire department, even our sheriff department. We contract with them, so we're not, they're not technically our direct employees, but they are, they are the backbone. When all of us leave in two to four years, they're still going to be here, and they have been for, some of them for 30 years. So it's really important that we, we involve them in, involve them in the day-to-day process and get their input, and, and also set up a structure so that when we do leave, that it will be solid enough that the next board can just take, take that in. They may modify it a bit, but they at least will have a strong foundation. Sorry. Now, my mask is falling down.
All right. Our next question. In your opinion, what are the top two or three issues facing Sciop Township in 2022? And how would you work to address them?
Well, yeah. Again, Kathleen has answered a lot of the same, has the same answers. So I do see a dysfunction in the, in the Township Hall with our board members and the board members and the public. The public is here, we are here. It needs to be brought together. You know, even those in the public that we don't necessarily agree with, but they may not have the same ideas regarding the project, but every single resident needs to be heard. And when they have a question, it needs to be answered. I find that people, that people want to be heard, so when we ignore them, they become angry. angry. When we listen to them, they may, they may not get the answer that they, they want, but at least they feel respected. So I see that as an issue that really needs to be healed, and it starts with us as a group. We're supposed to be working together and helping each other, not tearing each other apart, and that, that ends up, it's like, you know, when your parents are fighting, the kids end up having the brunt of the, the issues. And it's, this is the same thing. We're, we're here to, to help our community grow, and we're there to nurture on an equal basis, not as a hierarchy down to the lower level. We need to engage the public more, and I do agree with what Kathleen said. These committees, we have openings, and we, we need to have more regular folks be on these committees. And I know that they have applied. So we don't have a lack of people wanting to, to engage and become, you know, more involved. Uh, let's see, the second thing is safety. It's amazing to me that we have this large township, and it's growing. We have more developments that are coming in, we're going to have more people, more residents, and we have one sheriff on call at night. Now it's one sheriff per shift because we're lacking, and that's not the fault of Syo Township. It's just that we have, just right across the nation, we have a lack of people wanting to be police officers. But that can change, and this, at a local level, we can work with our sheriff department and help them, and even the state. I know the state has put money aside for training and to recruit more people, but we had two home invasions in, oh, it's the Stonegate neighborhood, I call it the Stonegate neighborhood, this was last week. The sheriff was called, they did a report, but they haven't been back there since. So there was two of them, and when, in normal times, when we have enough on staff, when there's an issue in a, in a neighborhood, and especially two or more, that the sheriff would do, deputies would do some patrol. And then when neighbors, residents see that, they feel a little bit safer. But they, residents need to understand that we are short-staffed and we have a large township. So if something's happening over here, this other person on this other side is going to have to wait. So that is the number two I see. Let's see, our fire department, I am so happy to see that we have put time and effort, and we have a great chief that has built our, built up our morale for our firefighters, and also helped build, back up the building. I was involved with some other residents voicing to the board in the last, the last board, and I'm happy to see that, and I want to see that continue. We have a millage, we have a higher millage than we did for 10 years before that, there's no reason why that money cannot be allocated properly to maintain our fire department. Again, it's safety. Our employees, as I said before, they need to be taken care of, we need to get staffing in here. You know, not just the, the top-level staffing, but the, the lower, we need the support staff, I guess is that, that's what it's called. And lastly, I mean, I could keep going, but I'm going to only do four here, on water As you all know, we've had the Galman plume for, since what, it was discovered in 1984, and it's, it's been spreading. So now, on Thursday, the 17th, I think it's Thursday, there's going to be a town hall regarding the, the water testing. So Marty Mayo, the other planning commission meeting, so it was, I guess it was the last one or the one before, sorry, too many meetings that flow together here, but she had a really great idea that development shouldn't, should halt in the Galman plume area. And because the safety, wellness, and health of our residents is what's most important, that's what our job as a board is supposed to do, number one. Everything else that is a want can wait. Now, again, there's nothing wrong with developments, with parks and pathways, with whatever, but it has to be done in a smart way. Okay, that's it for that.
All right, thank you. The next question, how would you represent the interests of all the various constituencies within the township? And to the degree that there are competing interests on the Board of Trustees, how would you reach an independent decision?
Those are good questions. The various constituencies, yes, we have a very eclectic township. We have our rural folks, we have our city folks, we have families, we have the elderly, we have a lot of different types of people. I have, in the past three years, I have talked with a lot of residents. I have reached out to residents that I thought were having issues and needed help. And I wasn't there to guide them, to go against anybody, I was there to help them with their issue and to help them figure out ways to either find a solution, I'm a very solution-oriented person, I'm not a, I'm not a problem-focused person, I'm a solution-focused. So helping residents with how to, I don't know if you've ever been through an issue, but when I first purchased my house, there was a non-disclosure issue that, regarding a flooding, historical flooding in my neighborhood, and the woman that sold me the house knew about this. So I knew nothing of, of anything. I, I mean, I was a farmer at one time, but other than that, dealing with the township or with government, I never had no idea. So I started from scratch, I had no idea what to do. So it took me three years to get it solved. I worked with the county, I worked with the township, I worked with my neighbors. So I learned a lot about government, how processes and procedures and development and, and the whole, whole shebang, so to speak. So knowing, so as, working in the township and going through the different processes regarding GFL and whatnot, and residents reached out to me so they could be heard, and that's how I started helping them, because of the education or the experience I had with what I had gone through. So there, that, so the point of this is, is that when residents are in a crisis and they're going through an issue where they live, and we should all live in peace and harmony in our own homes and our neighborhood, that it's up to us to reach out to them and help them, even if we can't solve their problem. Regarding independent decisions, I have no problem thinking independently. I look at every situation from every, every angle, so if there's two or three people involved in a project and we're all, they all have their own ideas, let's look at every single angle and come together and figure out the solution. And really, do we have competing interests on the board? Is it, is it really competing interest, or is it because we're, one person is focused on one subject and another person is focused on another subject? And what is most important? The biggest thing, I think, here is, you know, the, as far as, okay, why don't we just go to the governance? So what we're forgetting here at a general law township is that every single board member isn't equal. That's how a general law is set up. Now, the three officers, treasurer, supervisor, and clerk have specific statutory duties. You do not have a vote that's more important than Alec as a trustee or Kathy Noel as a trustee. So I see that there's some power plays going on, and it shouldn't have to be that way. It's about working together.
All right. The next question, please describe your understanding of government operations in a general law township.
Well, a little bit with what I just said, but a general law township is the, the basic government of, I get, well, if we just look at Michigan, because there's very few states that actually have townships, there's like maybe 12, I think, if I remember correctly. So there's our charter, or there's a general law, then charter township, then villages, then cities. So we're the very basic, and it really, it's a, they, we, Michigan had that because, you know, we have, we have a lot of rural, we still do in our, in our state. So it's for the basic general township, the general rural folks to have some type of basic government. Again, now, depending on the size of the population of a township, we, there can be five or seven board members. There's the three officers, as I said, there's supervisor, treasurer, and clerk, and you each have your specific duties based on statute. Then we have the other trustees. The trustees are, they're charged with voting and making decisions. So, you know, when you have an agenda packet, read the agenda packet, do your due diligence. If there's a project down there, for me, I would go out to wherever that area was and, and, you know, make sure that what I see on paper is matching what is actual real, and then come back and study and make a sound decision, based on your independent thinking. Not to say that you can't talk with other people and get, you know, their input, but when it comes down to it, making your own independent, independent choice or decision. And hopefully it's a, a good educated one. As far, and what else about general law township, it's very general. We can talk about committees and, and whatnot. Employees, I mean, we have the right to, you know, hire an administrator and, and whatnot. Then we, yeah, definitely our employees are important to support our board, and then the board is there as the administration of the township. So your decision is the top tier, everything else from the other committees that comes to you, that's when you make the final decision. So you have a very important role.
The next question, what in your education and experience makes you the best qualified candidate for this position?
Well, regarding my education, I do have a degree and I have certifications, I am a life coach, and those, those certifications were harder than graduate school. Now, I know this because my other, the other students in my class were, had graduates degrees, and they, they were, it was, it was really tough. One of them worked in Bill Clinton's office, by the way, he was actually pretty funny and the stories that he told us, but compared to, he's like, our teacher was worse than, you know, working in government. Anyway, so I have that, I was a farmer, I had a farm when my children were small for about five years, so I understand about life and death and, you know, being self-employed, I am self-employed since 2003. So I do not have a boss, I am my own boss. And I, in order for me to make a living, to be, to survive in my unemployment, or my unemployment, well, in my employment, I have, I have to be everything, I have to be the manager, I have to be the janitor, I have to be, if, having, you know, marketing issues, I have to figure all of that out. Websites, I had, when I hired somebody to do my website, I had them teach me how to build a website. So anything that I do, I want to be educated in. So, and I, I do, I tear things apart. Even, I work on my truck, and I do that with all my vehicles, because I want to know how things work. And I'm always looking for solutions. As far as other education, as I said, for the past three years, actually since I moved into Syo Township, it has been one long learning process. So I, I disclosed about my non-disclosure issue with my home, and that began the whole thing. After three years of working with that and getting that fixed, I taught myself how to become an attorney and represented myself in court in one. I have been to court in other times and represented myself. I am now a legal nerd, I think it's fun to read through statute. I may not be an expert, but I have attorney friends that I can always call and ask them if I'm understanding something properly. Being involved in a township, I have educated myself on road SADs, garbage, I have talked to over 40 townships, getting their input on all kinds of issues, what they have gone through, what is right, what is wrong, how to, how to work with people, how to reach out to residents, I mean, there's not much I haven't learned.
And our last question, what are Syo Township's greatest assets, and how can they be used to help the community thrive?
Well, I agree with Kathleen, and that was my number one, was residents. Without residents, we don't have a township. We just have 32 and a half, it was 34, 36 square, square miles of just land. But without residents, we don't have a township. Residents are very important. Not only are, are most of them taxpayers, if they are property owners, but we all live together, we are all neighbors, we are all a community. And in order to have a thriving community where people want to live and stay, we have to reach out and connect with each other. And however that is, what I find missing in Syo, I lived in Myland as my kids, my kids were young, and we didn't live in the city proper, but our kids went to, there was only one large school for each level at that time. So everybody knew each other, and then they would have, you know, picnics, ice cream socials, they had the Santa Claus, Christmas parades. I miss that in my, my community, I don't see that here. We, we do have our Halloween party at the, the fire department, which I really enjoy, but that's it. So my way of building a community is by reaching out to others and helping them and connecting with them, and, you know, if there's an elderly, somebody's elderly and all by themselves, and I know that they're going through a hardship, I, I connect with them, I drop off little gifts for them, because we are a community and we should be respecting each other and upholding each other, so we can make this even a better community. Another, well, another asset, I have driven pretty much every single road in Syo Township. Part of this was delivering flyers for the garbage issues, but the other part was just, I love to, I love to explore. And we have a beautiful, we have a beautiful township. And I have traveled to other townships in our area, and we, so let's say, for Lowdy Township, there are a lot of rural, and it's a beautiful township as well, but they don't have the downtown like we do. I'm not saying that Jackson Road is beautiful, please, I mean, it is, there's businesses, but we need to have those businesses to bring people in, to spend money, but we also need to support our residents that are here, and also our neighboring townships. And I think, well, and, well, actually, I'm sorry, I apologize, my number two was employees. I really, really love our employees. And then, okay, then number three is our beautiful township. So I got those backwards, sorry. And I will, I have a question for you, for the board, but I will wait until public comments. Okay?
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Number two.
Yeah. This is helpful.
Okay. We're good on time, so our next applicant, Patrick McLaughlin, please.
Patrick is going to participate remotely.
Remotely? Okay. Do we have Patrick?
We've got an option. Is that an option?
Sure.
Oh, great, I would have stayed home with my janitor, but. Yeah, I didn't know it was an option.
We'll just make them open.
Yeah, for the participants who are interviewing. I didn't know that.
Hello, are you able to hear me?
Yes. All right. All right, we're going to, Patrick, can you hear me all right?
Yes, I can.
All right.
Does he want to turn on?
Then we're going to run through the questions as well and listen for your response to those.
Does he want to turn on his video?
Yeah, would you have your video on, please?
Okay.
There you go.
All right. All right, the first question, how do you see your role as a trustee between now and November, and how would you help the board to be more effective?
My intention, if chosen to fill the board vacancy from trustee Vogel's resignation, is to thoughtfully study the ongoing issues facing the board and independently make decisions that I determine are in the best interest of the community. I would approach the issues with an open mind and consider pros and cons of any, the potential impact of our collective decisions. And I'm not entering this with any kind of preconceived ideas about issues facing the township. I will rely on my best judgment after considering the information presented, study the issues, and get feedback from neighbors and colleagues before making a decision. I aspire to be a unifying force of the board, helping to ensure that decision-making is thoughtful and takes all perspectives into consideration.
All right. The next question, in what, in your opinion, are the top two or three issues facing Syo Township in 2022? And how would you work to address them?
Syo Township faces the same challenges that many townships do, how to strategically manage growth while nurturing a business-friendly posture that also supports the needs of the people in the community. You know, it's necessary for us to ensure the basic services that residents expect, like police, fire, utilities, are delivered efficiently in a fiscally prudent fashion. I think a really important issue is preparing for a transition to a sustainable, carbon-neutral economy. This is an increasingly important issue, and we have to be thoughtful about how we communicate our intentions to accomplish this objective. This is an increasingly important issue and we have to be thoughtful about how we communicate our intentions to accomplish this objective. And one issue, I know that I'm exceeding beyond the two or three, but an additional issue that has to be discussed is an issue not faced by most townships, thankfully. And that's how we handle the decades-long Gelman dioxide pollution crisis. The resolution of this complex issue is critical importance in ensuring the well-being of Sciop Township residents and our neighboring communities now and for the generations to come. There's no question that I have a great deal to catch up on regarding the complexities of that issue. But I'd like to just commend Roger Rail for initially bringing this issue to the community's attention and trustee Noel for providing comprehensive updates in our township newsletter. All of these issues require the same due diligence, study and research and gathering feedback from colleagues and residents and discussing the best options moving forward. Viewing board of trustee meetings on Zoom has illustrated the differences of opinions within the community and the passion that residents bring to the township governance. It also speaks to the dedication of board members and township staff as they seek solutions to the challenges that Sciop Township faces. Listening to the community and working together, I'm confident the board can arrive at decisions that provide the best outcomes for our community.
All right, the next question, how would you represent the interests of all the various constituencies within the township? And to the degree there are competing interests on the board of trustees, how would you reach an independent decision?
I think I touched on this with my previous responses. I wouldn't make any decisions without a thorough vetting of available information and discussing with other trustees and the residents, the wisdom and the potential impact of any mutually agreed upon decisions. The health of a well-functioning government entity is dependent on frank and open discussions, a healthy exchange of ideas and collaboration among all the decision-makers to arrive at a consensus that best serves the township. It's essential that deliberations are transparent and appropriately shared with constituents. And finally, I'd like to stress that I don't expect unanimity on all issues. In fact, I don't think that's always the ideal outcome. I do want to express a desire to respect all decisions and opinions, even when they're contrary to my own conclusions. I think that democracy works best when we disagree while maintaining civil discourse.
All right, the next question is, please describe your understanding of government operations in a general law township.
Since arriving in Sciop Township in 2000, I've been involved in various activities. I've served on the board of the Lockalpine Improvement Association, the Dispute Resolution Center, serving Washington and Livingston Counties. And I currently serve as a board member on the Lockalpine Sanitary Authority. Working on difficult issues like the resolution of the status of the golf course in Lockalpine between the Neighborhood Association and the developer was really an instructive exercise in governance. It presented a microcosm of the workings of a larger organization like Sciop Township, where it's necessary to gather diverse opinions, consider options and recommend resolutions that serve the interests of the majority. Working with all of these organizations helped me appreciate our diversity while celebrating the common things that unite us. I wanted to get involved in township activities and I applied for a vacancy on the Sciop Township's Parks and Recreation Advisory Board four years ago. I'm very interested in hiking and biking our community and the board presented an ideal way for me to get involved in a positive way. I am extremely proud of the progress we've made with parks and preserves as we invest a portion of the millage passed overwhelmingly by the generous and supportive voters in Sciop Township. We've opened parks and preserves, installed parking lots, signage, defined trails. And you'll soon see the construction of a pavilion with other amenities in Marshall Park with more progress on the horizon. We've recently also hired interns from the University of Michigan who compiled a comprehensive survey of existing flora and fauna at two of our properties and developed plans for potentially restoring the landscape to its nationals, natural state where appropriate. One thing I'm certain is that Sciop Township relies on a dedicated staff and residents willing to run and serve as elected officials and a cadre of unpaid citizen volunteers that help advocate for policies and inform the board of potential solutions and opportunities. I'm totally aware there's a steep learning curve for any new member of the board and I'm committed to getting up to speed quickly in order to be effective as a trustee, if given the opportunity to serve.
All right, the next question is, what in your education and experience would make you the best qualified candidate for this position?
Academically, I earned a BS in Communication. It's a Bachelor of Science in Communication from Grand Valley State College. Before it was a university, it was a college. And my professional life has always intersected with effectively communicating in some way. Directly out of college, I worked in broadcasting at the ABC TV affiliate in Grand Rapids for many years, starting on the studio crew and ending my career there as a producer of a local weekly program. I left the station to teach communication courses in my alma mater, Grand Valley, for two years before making the leap to the corporate communications world for a locally-based global company. There I was responsible for producing video programming both domestically and internationally. My final responsibility there was transitioning our communications department from analog technology to the rapidly emerging digital environment. Thirteen years after working at a corporation, my family and I moved to Sciop Township 20, 20 years ago, 22 years ago, actually, for me to transition to serving as a director of communications for a technology startup in Ann Arbor. I subsequently landed with a boutique public relations agency based in Detroit that focused on serving manufacturers. My client at that agency was a global technology company where I managed media relations for 13 regional and general managers, provided media training and helped ensure that the coverage that they received was accurate, fair, and hopefully positive. Company executives were encouraged to always be well-prepared, honest and thoughtful in their interactions with the media. And those are qualities that I ascribe to in my personal and professional life. While at the agency, I was appointed to the Public Relations Society of America's Board of Ethics, an advisory group that provides directions to its nearly 30,000 members. I left the agency in 2008 and have worked from my home in Lockalpine as an independent PR practitioner ever since, primarily working with technology firms that serve the manufacturing industry. My experience in communications, public relations and teaching, I think, provides an ideal preparation for working on the issues that the board of trustees is facing. And my current semi-retired status enables me to devote the amount of time required to adequately serve as a trustee.
All right, and our last question, what are Sciop Township's greatest assets and how can they be used to help the community thrive?
When my wife and I were considering where to locate in the area, we, we researched several different communities, the city of Ann Arbor, Celine, Chelsea and Dexter. Our criteria was to find a community with good schools, a reasonable tax base, affordable housing, a proximity to essential businesses such as the Loews and the Meyer, access to local cultural activities and an abundance of natural, natural resources like the Huron River, which we could take advantage of. In addition, we have convenient access to I-94 and Detroit Metro Airport and a robust business corridor on Jackson Road, which helps subsidize the cost of water and sewer for our residents. All the boxes we checked were for Sciop Township in a unanimous family decision. Our two children thrived in Dexter Schools, which prepared them well for academic and professional success. They continue to be proud dreadnoughts. My wife Molly and I are particularly fond of biking from our Lockalpine neighborhood into the rural farms and green spaces that are so near our home. We're fortunate in Sciop Township to be surrounded by all the assets that makes this a desirable place to call home. If I'm chosen to fill the board vacancy, I will aspire to preserve the natural beauty of Sciop while helping to maintain and improve the quality of life for all residents and visitors to our community. Thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts with you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Patrick.
We're doing very well on time. And we have one applicant or one candidate left. And that is Robert Walsh.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is a little daunting, being last and listening to the other three. You guys already have a tough challenge. And now it's, hmm, can I get through every one of these questions?
That's good for your last name, starting with W.
Yeah, well, win some, you lose some. Can I get, can I get through these questions without just going, well, ditto, ditto, ditto? So we'll see.
We'll see. Process will be the same. I'll ask you the questions and eagerly listen to your reply. So, number one, how do you see your role as a trustee between now and November? And how would you help the board to be more effective?
I like this question because it was nuanced. My first reaction, and I like to give people the first reaction, whether it's right or wrong, was, does an appointed trustee get a little asterisk next to them that they're different from a regular one? But then I thought, the reason we're here is because it's an unusual circumstance. And not unusual that someone's leaving. We would be here if trustee Vogel had won Powerball, had $200 million after tax and was trying to figure out what to do with her life and was going to spend three months in Tahiti. So it really comes down to, what does the board need? This is your opportunity to look at your strengths and weaknesses as a group and assess amongst the four of us who have been privileged to interview, which one of us best fits what you need to make you as a whole more effective. My approach initially is, and I would like it to be essentially flipping the tables of this interview process. I would like to talk to everyone individually to get their perspectives, what's working, what's not working? What are your priorities? Where do you see the township needing to go? Not just necessarily in 2022, but longer term. And thinking not just the length of your service before the next election, but 10, 20 years down the road. Because there are some things that need to be started now to be effective when we need them. So my initial role, I would see mainly as a listener and an asker of questions. I don't see myself initially coming in with an agenda, saying, we should do this because a lot of this is financially driven, the budget's got to be set soon. There just isn't time to throw more items into the pile and sort through them. But as I gain experience and gain knowledge, I see that role shifting to being much more of an active participant in these are the things the township, in my opinion, should do. And then getting the opinions and hopefully the concurrence of the other board members.
In your opinion, what are the top two or three issues facing Sciop Township in 2022? And how would you work to address them?
I take 2022 to be short-term. I think the first item, and it's been talked about already, is the board of trustees needs to disappear from the media. It doesn't, unless it's good news. The township just doesn't need that publicity. It makes it harder on the trustees and the officers to get things done when there's a negative glare on the township. I think the way to do that is a lot of legwork. It's talking to people upfront. I had a boss at Ford who accused me of taking time off of my job to socialize. I would go talk to people when I thought I saw problems occurring, try to figure out how we could solve them before it came up in a meeting in front of the bosses so that instead of actually having to have that awkward discussion, we could say, we saw this coming. We think this is the solution. Do you agree? That's just a lot easier conversation to have. Second, and I think this came up last Tuesday, short-term, the ARPA funds are a one-time cash infusion. No one's going to give the township that kind of money again anytime soon. It needs to be spent wisely. Now, it may already be, and I don't know, you seem to imply in Tuesday that a lot of it was allocated or potentially, or maybe I misunderstood in the Zoom meeting. But this is a one-time shot in the arm. It should be used well. And I guess the last short-term is, if there are anything, it's come up in the road advisory, the millages or township SAD on roads, if those need to be renewed in this environment, we need to come up with a believable and compelling story to get the residents to go out and vote again. For or against, but they need to go out and vote if they need to. Longer term, I think we need to analyze the growth of the township, make sure the resources are available to accommodate it. And I think water, water's my always big bugaboo. It's not just Gelman. I'm on well-inseptic. The thing that always crosses my mind is, what if the well runs dry and they can't find anymore? We've got a lot of people on wells. If the wells go dry, do we have a backup?
All right. How would you represent the interests of all the various constituencies within the township? To the degree that there are competing interests on the board of trustees, how would you reach an independent decision?
The constituency is, I find tough because probably the largest constituency in the township is the silent majority. I was, for a long time, happily one of them. My neighbors don't pay that much attention to what's going on in the township. They know I'm on the periphery and involved, so they ask me. Their assumption is our elected officials are going to do the right thing. They might not agree with every decision. But in essence, they're going to keep this a place that they like to live and will make evolutionary steps to make it a better place. To go out and actually canvass, maybe if I get appointed and I have to run for election in November, or if I get appointed, when I run for election, I'll have a better idea of how to do that. At the moment, I would fall back to old habits, which are, by training, I'm an analyst. I would look at what decisions the board is making and try to assess, are we focusing our resources evenly throughout the various constituencies in the township? Making an independent decision? I don't know how to do it any other way. I know there are factions at the moment within the township. I'm not aligned with any of them. I've done my own research when it comes to the zoning board of appeals. I will do it on the road advisory committee. When there's facts and it's a facts-based decision, that's easy. When it's subjective, it'll come down to what pretty much everyone on the board is going to have to do, which is, internally, can you answer the question, is this in the best interest of the township? And if you come up with yes, listening to other opinions who are probably different than yours, then it's easy. If it's no, you have a decision. Also, but at least you have to have the frank, collegial discussion saying, I understand what you're saying, this is why I disagree, and be able to do it without any rancor occurring.
Can you please describe your Can you please describe your understanding of government operations in a general law township?
As of 8 o'clock this morning, pretty much nothing. Then I Googled general law township, and Alpina Township had a nice little packet on the differences between that and Charter Township, so I read through it. Am I an expert? No, I have a better understanding. But I am a quick study. I knew nothing about the Natural Rivers Act before getting on the ZBA, but when it came up, I think it's, if I recall correctly, I thought it was 96 pages, but dove through it before we had someone in front of us asking for a variance and said, all right, here's my understanding of what's law. Here's my understanding where they left wiggle room. How does this then fit into what we are going to decide as a group?
All right. What in your education and experience would make you the best qualified candidate for this position?
I've thought about this one a lot because I still get back to what I stated earlier. I don't know that I am the best qualified candidate for this position because I haven't talked with each and every one of you to understand what you think the strengths are of your group and what you want to keep, where do you think you're weak, and how can I help versus the other candidates? So I can only go back to things that I have done with various groups that have taken effort to find an aligned common goal. For me, the probably single most challenging was when I was at Ford working on the Ford BP Alliance. If anyone bodied Ford or leased a Ford, oh, the mid-ots to the end of the orts, the gas cap said Ford recommends BP. That was a deal that was done on a corporate level, but benefited Ford of Europe. I joined the effort within Ford to make the alliance work after that decision had been made, trying to get Ford marketing to understand that they had no choice, it had to go on. And then work with them for, all right, given that your hands are tied, mine are tied, what do you think we can get in return from BP to offset the fact that your hands are forced? That was a long and interesting discussion with both Ford and BP. And we found common ground. BP at the time was doing what we now see at a lot of gas stations with little TVs. We got Ford ads on for free. BP didn't like that because that was a source of revenue. And we had offers at dealerships in the gas stations that people could only get if they went in because a gas station makes money by having people come in and buy sodas and candy bars and hot stuff. So basically, our retail, got to get them in the door, so that's what we tried to do. So I bring a lot of experience at finding acceptable solutions so that it's not 100% I get, you get zero. Both sides may have to settle for 70%.
And our last question. What are Scioto Township's greatest assets? And how can they be used to help the community thrive?
I'm trying to think of a unique way of saying residents because, let's be honest, we've got a lot of talented people. We don't get enough of them to volunteer. I think that's up to those of us who already have volunteered. You guys have made even more of a step because the things I do, I'm at the moment somewhat invisible. Being on the zoning Board of Appeals or the Road Advisory doesn't get, you've put yourself out there, you're publicly elected officials. That takes a lot more courage. But we all know talented people in the township. We should be out as a group twisting arms to get more people to come forward because we need more perspectives, we need more brains. The other, Scioto, I like it here. Everyone who's in this room likes it here. We've got a little bit of everything. I think we have to work really hard to keep that. Personally, I like the river. I like to bike, I find it very calming to ride along the river. I like the border-to-border path. I like what we are intending to do as a township, to connect people to it. But to say that is what everyone else would agree, but for me, that's a big deal. Otherwise, thank you all. And if I had really been on my game tonight, I still owe Donna a recipe for turkey stuffing that I forgot at one of the events here years ago.
Well, thank you very much. All right, that will conclude our interview section. And I believe there was, we were going to offer the opportunity to members of the Board of Trustees if they chose to offer their thoughts at this time. Is there anyone on the board who would like to offer any thoughts at this time?
Can we hire all of them?
Well, we're not hiring, but...
No, well, okay, appointing, I chose an offer.
Clerk Clinta?
Sure, just a couple of things. First, I want to thank David for a very good process. So thank you, David. The last time we had an opening on the board for a partial term was in 2019 when Clerk Hedberg retired. And I just want to say this process is worlds ahead of where we were just three years ago. So thank you.
Thank you.
Second of all, I want to thank the eight candidates for putting yourselves out there, for stepping up to serve. And for the four of you who interviewed tonight, it was really a privilege to be able to just sit and listen and take in the four of your answers. And everybody's coming with different strengths. I do want to ask that each of the four of you, I would love to speak with each of the four of you a little bit more individually between now and Tuesday. We'll reach out to you for those conversations. But thank you again for interviewing tonight.
Any other board members who would like to say anything?
I'll go after you.
I just want to also thank the candidates. I guess, I just wanted to point out something, some of the things that, in my evaluation of the candidates, I'm looking for criteria on which to make the determination. And we'll integrate the information from tonight's, that's gleaned from tonight's candidate interviews. But you know, I was looking for, from this packet as well as from the interviews, you know, familiarity with Scioto Township, including the BOT, land development, address pressures, business, other aspects of Scioto. Participation on local committees and commissions, have they participated previously? Participation in other local outside commissions and committees that deal with businesses and/or boards or committees. Work experience, team-building skills, which I think a number of you identified. Different work configurations and roles as a support member or a leader within an organization. Conflict resolution, an ability to handle adverse situational work topics and other issues. Demonstrative communication skills, business acumen, part of business and leading their own business potentially, and then personal conduct in quorum in meetings. And I think those are all very important things. I would ask, and I'm sorry, this is a separate comment, but I really do want to implore people tonight that the trustees and the public discuss the attributes, and I actually wrote this down, that they like a particular candidate rather than disparage another. That's just not productive. The applicants have provided background information, and if they participated in this question and answer session, you don't need to build somebody up by breaking down another individual. And so I would just, we have information tonight, we need to be able to take that home and assess it. But I just ask everyone that you don't need to make yourself look better by disparaging another. You know, you don't have all the information here, and that's why we're having this meeting. So I just, I ask everyone to use that and use that this evening in a fair and civil manner so that we can get this done and get the right person for this candidate, or for this position, I should say.
Trustee Noel?
I was very impressed with everyone. And I need to give this significant thought. I, I want to highly consider people who have had a range of involvement in the township over a period of time. I, the breadth of knowledge that comes with that is important to me. So I want to thank all of you because it was, I thought things would be clearer for me than they are at this time. So I'll have some thinking to do. And I may want to reach out to some of you and ask a few other questions. So thank you.
Treasurer Palmer, did you want to add anything?
To my comment? No, because I'm serious.
All right. I would also like, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say thank you to all of the applicants for your well-thought-out comments. That information is appreciated. And I would encourage the trustees to do whatever additional research that you wish so that you can make as informed a decision based on what you heard tonight, what you will continue to hear later on in public comment, and what you hear throughout the rest of the week. So that come a week from tonight, you can make as informed a decision as possible and select one person to fill the trustee seat. So thank you for this opportunity to hopefully have a good transparent process.
And I would like to add my voice to thanking the candidates who interviewed this evening. I'd also like to thank again the candidates who applied and were not selected to interview. I agree with the sentiment that we need to involve people in Scioto Township. And so I recognize everyone's interest in being involved in this way. And I encourage everyone to find ways to be involved regardless of whether you're the one who is selected to fill this particular vacancy. And I would like also to add my thanks to you, Township Administrator Raleigh, for organizing this. I know it was, we had to do it fairly quickly. And so it was kind of like building the train as it was rolling down the tracks. And I think you did a remarkable job under the circumstances. I think like any process like this, you know, we're sort of learning things as we go. And if we have to go through a process like this again, God forbid, that we can make improvements. But I thought this went very well, or has gone very well. And it has provided us with a lot of good information to consider as we make this decision. And I also want to thank you, trustee Jerome, for putting out there the idea that the best way to sort of help us to make this decision is to focus on what people like about particular candidates and not to try and tear other candidates down. I don't think that really helps us to make a decision.
Were you concerned about that with the board?
No, no, I'm just, I'm just saying that that's, I think, just in general, I think that's...
I'm saying for the public and for the board. And none of us have done that, which is one of the...
No, no, I don't. I just wanted to share the particular reasons.
I'm not pointing a finger at anyone. I'm just saying that I think that is a very good point to make and that I encourage people, members of the public or members of the board or anyone who wants to provide us with their point of view to accentuate the positive. And with that, I would like to turn to public comment. And this is a time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matter under the purview of the Board of Trustees. And we have some members of the public here present in person. We usually offer them, those who are present in person, the first opportunity to speak. So if there are members of the public who are here in touch at all who would like to address the board, please come forward to the table. Oh, yes, please. Trustee Jerome, please play your usual role of timekeeper. Each person has three minutes for their comment.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to be interviewed. And as well as my fellow residents, I would support any of them. So I thought that maybe we would have questions after our interview. So this is a question for everybody on the board. Has the board surveyed the employees and who they would choose as an applicant, one of the applicants? Because they will be working with, as you know, they work with you directly. And so I think that would have been a, that should have been a high priority if it hasn't. And if they haven't been surveyed or asked, why not? I know you're not supposed to have dialogue during questions or comments, so. And I think that's it. Thank you.
And I will just offer, I've had informal conversations with staff members about candidates, but there's been no formal process.
Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak during public comment?
Just briefly, I meant to say this earlier, just to get a sense of who I am. There's some implication that some of us are doing things politically and that potentially we're of an opposing political party. I just wanted to let you guys know that I volunteer for the Democratic Party's state voter protection program. I did that in 2020 for that election. And that's a program where you go and be a poll observer. So I went within a 100-mile radius, but I did go to a lot of places to ensure that things were handled correctly. And then on Election Day, I was an election challenger. And the purpose of that is, again, to make sure that procedures are followed properly. It's also educational for me, so a lot of things I didn't know about. So when I arrived at my site, I told the lead election official that I was not there to challenge at all. I was just there to observe. I was not going to disrupt at all. So if you can glean from that what I'm saying, I am a Democrat. I have been my entire life. Thanks.
Present in person who would like to speak?
I'm Martha May of the Scioto. I don't know if this is the appropriate time to say I am in favor of one of the candidates and I urge you to give this person serious consideration. As I listen to the presentations, I haven't seen other materials about them, but I have bumped into various members as I go about the township doing my thing. And I was very impressed by Patrick McLaughlin. I have encountered him as I participated in the park walks that Hob had arranged. And I think I learned, when I asked him, what do you do? I learned that he's a member of the LASSA board. In case people don't know what that is, LASSA is our, well, it's the sewer, water production and sewer plant that Lock Alpine uses. And it's a private, well, it's a Lock Alpine plant, but it is run by people from Webster Township and Scioto Township. And I'm impressed that Patrick has started out on the board of Lock Alpine, and he is therefore familiar with the issues that Lock Alpine faces. And he thought it was important to participate... And he thought it was important to participate in public affairs, and he's on the, what is it, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. And so I know that he has reached out to the township and is participating in what they're doing. I think that's very important, participate in township affairs. I was also impressed that he really is a private consultant professionally and that communication is his issue. And he has a lot of experience in communicating. I think he thinks it's important, and he thinks that in any communication situation, various sides need to be heard and understood. He supports growth in the township. He also supports the natural features. I don't think he emphasized that very much in what he presented, but he is on the Parks and Recreation. And he sees that as a key element of one of the strengths of the township, bringing people interested in moving in. And of course, since he's on the LASSA board, he supports making sure that the Syo Township utilities, that LASSA, you know, and the township utilities work well.
Are there others present who would like to speak during public comments?
This decision tonight has a direct effect on all our lives. I don't know how come the public comments were cut to half. Instead of two, three minutes, it's one, three minutes, argue what I can until the 22nd. My topic of conversation with you tonight is uncomfortable truth. I have no doubt that they're all well-spoken, well-intentioned. Many of them said that we have to go out there and twist arms for people to come forward and get involved. In order for people to come forward and get involved, they have to think that the process is fair. I'm going to give you some backgrounds about Syo Township, it's not what Syo that used to be. Currently on our board, which I'm proud of this fact, we have the following gender diversities. We have 57.14% female representation. We have 14.29% gender identity or LGBTQ representation. We have 28.57% male representation. As of the last census, Syo Township is 25.1% non-white, as follows. 7% American Indian, 14.4% Asians, 3.7% Blacks, 15% are foreign-born people, Hispanics are 2.6%, two or more races by racial are 3.9%. The whites make up 75%, the non-whites 25%. Representation for all, look around you, white. One out of each four persons in Syo Township has no racial diversity representation. Repeatedly during the past few board meetings, I pointed this out to the entire board, that this board is homogeneously white. Look around yourself. It's great we have gender diversity, but we have no racial diversity in a township when one out of each four person now is a non-white person. To that end, we look at what the process is. The process is that eight people, we add for equality of access, not equality of result. If all the eight people were interviewed, I could live with that fact. But the fact to take four people of white, Anglo-Saxon, and make this board, they want to open again one more white person, and to ignore that one out of each four persons in this township again that you run into is a non-white with no representation, makes that this process stinks. It is not legitimate for people like us. And when the supervisor says, well, we are better than we were before, we have somebody of Indian descent appointed and somebody of the African-American appointed to some other board, those are subordinate positions. I was told that people should run for these positions if they run, we consider everybody equally. Well, we ran the Francois outsiders, including the slate which has a minority in it. You guys decided to exit the slate which had the minority in it and advanced an all-white slate. There's no way to sugarcoat it. And you are creating, I'm just the last center, you are creating a liability for the entire board under USC 421983 and USC 421985. I spoke to the National Affairs Office, the Office of Government Operations today. They are not happy with what is going on and the way that this has been portrayed. I intend to turn over to them the entirety of the meetings and what this has been going on and how this has to come about. Yeah, but we should give another three minutes.
Are there others present who would like to comment? In that case, please turn to the remote participants and whoever is first.
We do have three Zoom hands up at the time. First is Will Weaver, followed by Andy T. Will, please go ahead.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for the opportunity to address the board. I live in Syo Township. I am the Chair of the Land Preservation Commission. I was particularly pleased to hear that all of the candidates appreciate the natural beauty of Syo. And I note in particular that Ms. Brandt really emphasized in her presentation how much the natural features are important to her. And the other candidates as well alluded to the parks and the recreation, the streams. I was particularly impressed by both the communication ability of Mr. McLaughlin as well as his reference and his service to parks and recreation. And it's particularly important now that the board and the citizens of Syo are aware of what we've been doing to preserve open space and farmlands. We have a millage coming up for renewal vote in the general election. And it would certainly be my hope that whoever it is that's chosen will continue the tradition of the Board of Trustees in supporting the actions of the Open Space Commission, Land Preservation Commission, and the other commissions that are concerned with creating land preservation and recreational opportunities. So with that, I appreciate the opportunity to address you. Thank you.
Thanks, Will. Next up is Andy T., followed by Paula G. Andy, please go ahead.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Okay, great. Andy Turner, Syo Township resident. First off, I'd just like to say well done to the township for identifying really, four really strong candidates. I am the chairperson for, you know, full disclosure, I'm the Chair of the Parks Advisory Board, and I've worked with Patrick McLaughlin the last four years, most recently as fellow officers. And I guess just to avoid redundancy, I'll just kind of highlight some, maybe some things that the board and the public should hear. Our group often disagrees, and I've always found Patrick to be, to look at multiple perspectives, really have a voice of reason. And I think that with his communication skills, they've always really been on display within our group. And just a couple little things, you know, I think when you see his writings in the Township newsletter, I mean, he really cares about the township. I mean, that just really is on full display with the newsletter. He's learned Granicus. He's done training. He's freshened up or updated all the website materials for parks and our green space. He's taken on the social media challenges with our Facebook page and really energized our communication with the public. And so, and then beyond that, you know, he's a person that will always call you back, will always email you right back. He's helped me empty a trailer full of trash, you know, or he's, you know, bushwhacked a trail or cut back some weeds on a boardwalk to make it look nicer for the public. So you're getting a full range of investment from Patrick. And so hopefully this just helps provide some more perspective for the board and the public to consider. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Andy. Next up is Paula G. Paula, please go ahead.
Yeah, I'm a Syo resident. Thank you for listening to me. And it sounds like you have some very good candidates, but I have to say that I support Gillian Carey. She was very active in our GFL issues, has brought many, many people into looking at different aspects of the township. She also supports open spaces, but also listens to residents about their issues and concerns about the growth and of the direction that Syo is in. And I also support Kathleen Brand for, I've listened to her during the planning commission, asking some great questions and putting forth some facts and ideas that I hadn't thought of before. And I think we need to look at people who are going to make a more cohesive board that is actually, that does have diversity, not just diversity in gender or color. And I want to note that all people could have, could have run for the board. And I'm looking forward to having someone that can bring, bring a little bit of diversity and thought to the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Next up is Joe Pattinson. Joe, please go ahead.
Thank you, Rob Pattinson, Syo Township. First of all, I'd like to thank the four candidates for the quality of their answers and their thought processes. Syo Township has a chance here to break the cycle. And this, your current term is a year and three months old. And I think we can all agree that it has been a very difficult year and three months. And I would invite the board to have a great deal of discussion amongst yourselves and with the candidates over the next week to make the best decision. And I hope that you choose to break the cycle of the past year and three months and help move us forward in a way that brings civility, thoughtfulness, and balance, most importantly, balance back to this board. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe and Rob. I see Joe from my face. There are no more, no more comments.
In that case, is there a motion to adjourn? A motion to adjourn by Trustee Jerome is the second, and second by Trustee Noel. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? We are adjourned.
Recording stopped.